Okay, this will be a meeting of the Tennessee Town Board of Trustees, August 13th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Wes.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Okay, agenda item number one, I'm sorry, number two is public hearing for rezoning. A petition to amend zoning for the undeveloped property not yet addressed located west side of Highway 81, north of Highway 51, between Highway 81 and Main Street, further described as particular tract of land in the southeast quarter of Section 13, Township 19, north range seven west of the Indian Meridian, Kingfisher County, State of Oklahoma. Being more particularly described as follows: All of the southeast quarter lying west of the west ride of way line of State Highway 81 is requested by the property owner. The property is presently zoned urban estate residential, R1A. The applicant is requesting a change to Highway Commercial District C3. Tiffany, I will turn it over to you to give a report on that, please.
Doug usually comes and does this, but he happened to put the wrong date in this calendar. So Scotty had requested rezoning back in December. By the time we got everything done, COVID hit, so we weren't really meeting, so we're just not getting to this. This is going to be on the west side. He has rezoned everything on the east side. He has zoned everything on the east side of, rezoned everything on the east side of Highway 81, and now he would like this to be rezoned on the west side of Highway 81. The planning board met at 5:30 today and has passed it to recommend approval to the town board. So if there's any public comments, questions, or anything-
This is a public hearing for this purpose, so-
-to answer. Doug did say that being close to a railroad, that it would be nice to be industrial, but with the size of the track, that it is probably not reasonable to be industrial, that being on that highway, highway commercial is the best way probably for it to be.
Any comments from the public? Questions, statements, thoughts?
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. That item will be later in the agenda for vote. So that will conclude the public hearing. Item three is report from the Tennessee United Board. Got several board members here tonight. Barb, Scotty, Wes.
He was the last minute.
We haven't met since the last one.
I was there.
So we talked about it, I guess, since you were there. We canceled the wine festival for this year.
Oh, me?
I have a question. Why did you guys cancel it? Because we've had three wine vendors call us at town hall asking-
I voted to keep it. They don't ask me. The others voted to keep it.
Well, I think the vendors is not the issue. I think that we have the attendance. That was my concern. Didn't know that we would, with all the social distancing and stuff like that, I just, I didn't know. Yeah. We didn't really want to risk spending the money to put it on and then no one attended. That was a big part of my decision on it.
Because just in the last three days, we've had several-
The vendors, I think, would be there, you know, they're hungry for it. They haven't done anything all year.
They've had a slow year, but they're looking to do something.
But I just was concerned about what kind of attendance we would have. Didn't want to, you know, for our-
State Fair was canceled. Said the state fair was canceled.
Good day.
Yeah.
Anything else from the Tennessee United Board? All right. Consider approval of the consent agenda minutes in the July meetings. Approval of claims as follows: August purchase orders, 24,546-23. August restricted sales tax fund, 24,704-49. August library fund, 445-40. August cemetery care fund, 9,157-50. August street and alley fund, 3137. Accept the following reports, treasurer, library, and police. Are there any comments?
I didn't get a police report in there. I won't be willing to answer any more questions. I apologize.
If we ever get this-
I put on the agenda.
The patio covered, which cemetery is finished?
It is, the pavilion is up, but the west end is not finished. The donor built the pavilion, but the west end is the town's to finish. We have plans for a restroom and a small garage.
Do we have plans to finish it, or do we all have it?
We, we do. We just need to, to get a proposal out of exactly the, and Alyssa, correct me if I'm wrong, but the cemetery pavilion, we've got the sewer line laid up under where the floor will be in the west side. Is that correct? Do you remember?
One month.
Okay. Okay. I couldn't remember where, when you came in, in there, but I'm, I'm sure it is, and so we need to, we will need to work on that. Tiffany, I had a question on the 9,157-50. Was that for the mapping and plotting of the cemetery? Okay, is that, that's not total, though, is it? Is that a partial?
No, that's the second payment.
Okay.
They have it ready for us to go out and validate. So we try to get a-
Got to get a team?
A team to go out and start validating.
And that means just walking the cemeteries and-
Verifying what he has data-wise.
Okay.
Of all the stones.
Okay. I think, weren't we going to try to get some help from volunteers for that?
Yes, I think there's volunteers that have, when we put it out on Hall dot Tennessee, there was some volunteers to go out and help us.
Okay, great. Hopefully that-
But all it is is just validating what he has?
Yes, because he took a picture of every single stone, and so he has names, datavers, death dates, and all that, and make sure that the spelling is correct.
Oh, I see.
The date of birth, the death date, everything.
Okay.
Any other comments on the consent agenda?
I mean, when we approve the consent agenda.
Roll call, please.
Keith.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
All right, item five is citizens' comments. We've got a full crowd tonight. It's always good to see an audience out there. Anybody have anything that they would like to stay, to, sorry to say? Any comments at all?
How'd you live?
Okay.
I know Tiffany, you, you mentioned you didn't have any other date, and thank you for everything you've been doing for my, my situation. I do have something. I'd like to show the boards the sheet that I brought you through.
Oh, I have it, and you go ahead.
Richard, this is, I know I talked to you guys about my business, the building I already have up for these businesses I plan on opening soon, but this is my bigger picture for that land, or that strip of land west of Conical Road. This isn't exactly to scale, but I did want to come up with something to show you guys what I have planned for, what the vision is, what the goal is for that land. I did include, you know, if the water line was to be approved, kind of a proposed, it might need some adjustments, but like I said, I just wanted to present that to you guys and show you that there's much more that I want to do than just the building I have out there right now.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
What, what do, oh, nevermind, I forget it. Have to be a minute.
Because I know everything, it might not be perfect to the T, and it's, when we work with OG, you need to put electric posts, you need to have electricity further down, and those are all things I, you know, I'd be working with them. And the town to get this to where we needed to get it to, so we can approve the wireline, and then so we can further furnish the land, and I really li, I'm really determined to develop this piece of land for future business.
On this 60-foot by 100-foot event venue, that's your existing building, correct? And all of these, like the pavilion and the other two are proposed?
Yes, our next, our next phase of what I have said, we have said is the outside area, which is basically a pavilion, right? And then the other, the 40 by 60 that you have on there, and the 60 by 100 are future plans. The shaded area with the extra buildings, that would just be, you know, what, the goal is to have businesses all the way to the end.
To, yeah, to lease or sell that property as well.
Exactly.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this before the board, that, I think that gives us some insight on what you're wanting to accomplish.
Well, like I said, I appreciate, I know it's not just, yes, we're going to do it. I know it's not that easy, so I appreciate Tiffany and all of you for all your consideration and work you guys have put into it.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, I'm talking to you, please.
Any other comments? Okay, item six, other scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, and will take action on the following. Item A, a petition to amend zoning for the undeveloped property not yet addressed located west side of Highway 81, north of Highway 51, between Highway 81 and Main Street, further described as a particular tract of land in the southeast quarter of Section 13, 19, north range seven west of the Indian Meridian, Kingfisher County, State of Oklahoma. Being more particularly described as follows: All of the southeast quarter lying west of the west ride of way line of State Highway 81 is requested by the property owner. The property is presently zoned urban estate residential district, R1A. The applicant is requesting a change to Highway Commercial District C3. We've heard from Tiffany that the planning board has met and recommends that we pass on that.
Somebody working on that?
Yes. I make a motion to accept the proposal of petition to change the rezoning urban, the title residential district, R1A, to commercial district, C3.
Next second. Roll call, please.
Cliff.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Okay. Item B, discussion of possible action to designate Doug Moore, IBTS, as the town flood plain administrator?
Curtis was our flood plain administrator. Since we have a very small area in our town that is considered, is in the 100-year flood plain, we are required to have a flood plain administrator. That person has to go once a year to school and all of that. I just thought that it would be feasible for us to, since Doug is up on the flood plain administration, and the only time we have to do anything with it is if somebody decides to build something in it or anything like that, then they have to, you know, do paperwork.
He's aware of who wants it.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is. Other than that, it won't cost us anything.
Teach him to write the wrong date.
That's exactly what I think.
So-
I think it sounds like a good idea, because I'm sure he's doing this for other communities.
Yes, he is, doing it for other communities.
Will he charge for that?
Only if he has to do anything regarding the flood plain management.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's part of our IBTS contract.
I'm going to move that the board designate Doug Moore with IBTS as the town of Tennessee flood plain administrator.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Wes.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Okay, item C, discussion with possible action on decision to declare property at 220 South Main Street dilapidated.
Can we table this, or can we take no action? I put this on the agenda, but I was supposed to do a public hearing. We have to have an actual public hearing, and I did not put the public hearing on there. One thing that we were talked about doing is designating the actual hearing officer. So I think I'll be bringing it before the board, actually designating a hearing officer. And that way, the hearing doesn't have to go before the board, and then whatever the hearing officer decides, then they would have an appeal to the, to the town board.
Okay.
So if we can-
Yeah, we, we will table that.
Okay.
Item D.
What constitutes dilapidation? I mean, there's got to be a guideline somewhere, but I don't know what it is.
There is a definition, I don't have the actual definition with me, but in state statute.
I think it's a pro, it's a long, I think, non-
And it, it creates a health-
Or habitable.
Yeah, it creates a health, you know, a health hazard and-
Health danger.
Yeah.
And the building may use after that declaration?
No, it cannot. Once, once the council or the hearing officer declares that, then even if it is sold, then that declaration stays with the building, and it cannot be-
If it is sold, can the building, it's not necessary to tear down the building, but to, if the buil-
Once you declare it, it has to be dilapidated, then it has to be taken down.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Yeah, that would have to happen prior to us declaring it dilapidated.
I would like to have that double check with the town's attorney.
Okay, I will.
Because I don't think that applies to other jurisdictions. I realize each jurisdiction has their own rules. It's not an unusual problem to have this situation.
I've been having Doug with IBTS helping with, with some of these, because I checked with our attorney to help me on this, and then he asked me to have Doug help me, and so I've been having Doug help me with this, with this one, and so-
Well, does it only pretend to, pertain to, I mean, I've got some questions. I didn't, I didn't know how that worked.
And that's why, another reason why I wanted him, because he's not here.
I'm glad you did that, because I, I mean, I understand where we're at with it, but I don't understand the process and what all it entails. And is it just, how broad of a scope is it for different structures, I guess, is what I'm trying to say? Is, would it be, would a shed be considered dilapidated?
Um, yes, you can consider sheds dilapidated, yes.
So then-
That really brings, brings some questions to me there. I just feel like that, there's no doubt that it needs tore down or fixed. I haven't, I'm not questioning that. But if we have others, as a citizen, I'm saying, why this one?
This one was fitting, it's, because it was throwing tin in the middle of the highway.
Windstorm.
Like tin had been blowing into the middle of the highway, so from the roof.
Did you print those pictures?
Yeah, I have the pictures.
I believe that, I'm still, um-
Like, they had placed tin on top of the roof to help with maybe alleviate some of the leaks, I don't know. And those pieces of tin have been blowing off and blowing into the middle of the highway.
I thought, yeah, I see. I've seen him as well, so.
So much of the roof is gone. That tin laying off the roof was a hazard, and so much of the tin is gone, and there's very little left. In a way, it-
Maybe that's-
-teared itself because there's no more tin in it. I'd hate to see all three buildings torn down, because it might create a hole on Main Street.
We only did, we did not do all three buildings.
Just these, what, first ones?
Just the south one?
Just the south.
That's amazing.
Is that in?
And the other two could be, I think they're still in good shape.
Is the, is, then the south building is a 25-foot front, because it seems to all connect, which would be a 50-foot front, but, so you, this addresses the south 25 feet, correct? Okay. I wasn't sure I had that right. I was not thinking correctly on that.
So the process is, we get a, there's a hearing?
Yes.
Through the planning board?
No, what, what, by state statute, they're allowed a hearing, and right now, we don't have a designated hearing officer, so the hearing would go before the town board. But normally, if you have a hearing officer, then it would go before the hearing officer. The hearing officer then makes the decision whether it's dilapidated or not. Then they would be able to appeal to the town board.
Okay.
But if the town board makes the decision, they really don't have an appeal process. So Doug says that we really should designate a hearing officer, and then to give them that appeal process.
Okay.
I'm really trying to get into this and make sure everything is done properly.
Yeah, at least we're-
The roof is gone, so the barge beams are rotting away. I'd hate to see that building torn down, but in fact, it's falling down anyway. The two walls are caving inward. The building could be saved, but it has to be by someone, that, that, it, it would take money to save that building. If you're in a larger town, you probably could get a rent or whatever off of it, or something, to save that building. Yeah. What can you say?
Yeah.
It either falls down on its own, or the town condemns it.
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah. It really is. So you're tabling, seeing them, Doug?
Yes, that item will be tabled. Item D, discussion of possible action to solve the two used building frames. We have discussed that before. I would like to, Tiffany and I have talked, and she put it in the memo that she has sent. Item F is discussion with possible action to schedule a town board planning session. What, do you want to explain what you've got in mind there?
What?
On the town board planning session?
Or do you just want to move this down, or?
Let's just move it. Let's move item, let's jump down to item F, if we may.
Anybody opposed to that?
No.
Okay. Discussion with possible action to schedule a town board planning session. Tiffany has discussed this with me, and I will let her present it. I think it's an excellent idea.
So Richard has been bringing up several times, and I know this month, he wanted to put on the agenda, long-term planning, grants, and other things.
Community development.
Community development. And so when him and I met Monday, I mentioned to him, and then I talked to Bert, about, how about we do, because I know Richard spoke to me about several times, too, doing a session that where all of the town board comes together, and we do a planning, a plan, you know, where we get together, probably take all day, we plan for a future-
Probably is Saturday.
This way, I can get with the department heads, we can come up with what we, capital projects that we need, capital projects that we want for the next year, for the next five years, maybe even 10 years, and bring them to the board. The board can say yes, say no, they can add, and we can come up with our plan. When I was talking to Bert, where it's like, uh, and I was like, we need to keep on track. And he said, yes. And I said, well, we need a facilitator. So I've reached out to somebody, they haven't gotten back to me, that I'm hoping to hear from her soon, but I plan on, if you guys agree to it, plan on getting a facilitator to keep us on track, keep us focused, but I really think that it's something that we need to do.
I think it's, I think it's an excellent idea. I know we come together every month here as a board, and each department is doing a good job of keeping the water flowing and the streets drivable and that sort of thing, but there are long-range plans. There's water lines that we know, Alyssa could probably name 10 of them without even stopping to think, that need to be replaced, and not talking just a few feet, but several blocks. And I think this would give us a great opportunity to, to open it to the public as well, to see what the public thinks is the priorities in our community, and, and for us to hear from our people that are out there doing the work and what needs to be done. And I think a Saturday, Tiffany mentioned, October or January, to me, I am wanting to get it done before the next budget year. I think I was kind of leaning toward January. I don't know what, what were your thoughts?
January sounds good, because that would give me time to get with, with all of them.
Right, because it'll take a little time to prepare, and-
I just wanted to stay away from the holiday months.
Right. That gets us through, through the holidays, and where hopefully everybody's not so busy, and if it's freezing cold outside, we can gather, I'm assuming here, or wherever, maybe if we need to find a bigger space, whatever, but what is, what's everybody?
I'm sure we could have a church.
What's everybody?
I, I think it'd be a really good deal to have that, that way, because sometimes we vote on something to get, that we think that's going to be done, and then we find out that it hasn't been done for, you know, some time until somebody brings it back up to our attention. So this will give us a place to start, that we will know where we're at and where, where we want to go. So that's a very important, instead of just, oh, this has to be fixed, this has to be fixed. We'll have a plan of where we're going to go.
Any other thoughts?
I think Tiffany asked me to come in Monday, we're going on the things that I keep high interested on Main Street, if anyone knows that. Tiffany came back with this planning session, and I think it's excellent. I think Kingfisher, their town board has a two-day planning commission. They, they just set aside two days and do it. I think when we have a meeting like this evening, and you can see what's on the agenda, it's awful hard, you can't really develop long-range plans in what our usual town council made. And of course, once we- And of course, once we do this, identify our needs and set our priorities, then we can get our grants and order what we're going to go after. And let the people of Tennessee know what's going on.
Exactly.
So I think it was an excellent suggestion.
That's why I wondered if we should move it to a bigger venue where we could have the public. If we have, I, I would love to see public input. I hope we get people to come and give us their ideas that we can be thinking about a venue.
I'm sure the school would let us use the auditorium if, I mean.
The conference room?
Well, either even the, where we could be on the stage.
I don't think they're letting outside people.
Oh.
Maybe when it's not school hours, maybe you can. I don't know.
I thought the, like, the, that or the event center would be a.
Be great.
You know?
Be great.
You can socially distance in the event center.
It would be so nice if we didn't have to by then.
Yeah, it'll be a, be electric, so.
Any other discussion on that?
I missed where you, my hearing. Where you're going to have this planning commission, but you know, we did, we did, with the vision committee, we had a nice meeting at, at the banquet room at Edema. And that's a fairly large room. And I think there were a lot of people there that night. There were quite a few people there. So that fits on Main Street. I think that's like more inviting to the public.
Yeah. One thing about, if we use, if we were able to use the seminar room at the auditorium, Richard, they've got a lot of audio visual where we could, we could whiteboard, electronic whiteboards where we could make lists of things and, but we will certainly, we will certainly try to take everything into consideration on the place and, and in time, but I feel like January would be good and we kind of get everybody through the holidays and we're in a little bit of a lull period there, so. Okay, well, that will take us back up to item D, discussion with possible action to sell the two used steel building frames. That being said, personally, and y'all feel free to chime in here. Personally, I would like to see us table that until after this planning meeting to see exactly what our goals are, to see if there are usages maybe totally different than what our first intentions were. But see if we have, have any kind of ideas that, that those may be used for. I know that the, I know for one thing that, that at some point, I would want to see the street and the water department combined. The water department's in a small building up here. And I think the street department's basically running out of room with equipment and things. And if we had a place, then maybe that's a use. I don't know. Just throwing things out there. It's just an idea. But what are your thoughts on that?
I would like to table that, that item because if we are going to have, try to reach out to some long-term planning, we don't know, we've got to what, where we are there.
I, I think we should, Tiffany said that she talked to the guy that we got them from. He may have somebody that would be interested in them. And she also found out that buying a new building or new pavilion versus what we have and getting it where it is, it's going to be about a wash. So why not? I mean, if you can get, get the same thing new than what we have, might as well just lick our, you know, try to get what we can out of it, lick our wounds and, and go on. And just get out from underneath it. We've had it for 10 years where we're supposed to have done something with it, you know, right after we got it. And we've sat on it. And I, I think it's just been a, more of a pain in the butt than it's been anything. And I don't see a, a reason to hang on to it when we can get something new for about the same money that we're.
I think it depended a lot on the usage of whether this would be more economical. And I think, I haven't talked to him at all, but I think if we were to build a pavilion, this might be a, a cheaper route. If we were to build a building out of them, it may be best to go with, with new. You got any ideas, Cliff?
Not, not really. I mean, you know, if it's going to be the same, it might as, you know, it's half, one and a half a dozen.
And I didn't misrepresent what you said, did I?
John Dutch Moore said that it depended on what we planned to do with them. That he could not actually give us which way, because I asked him which way, I mean, what it would be, if it would be cheaper to use these steel frames or build a new one. And he said it depended on what your plan is.
Yeah. And I was just, I want to make it clear that what I said about my thoughts were if it were a pavilion, it might be less expensive. That's just my assumption. That's not, that's not an educated statement. Richard?
My statement's not educated either. I mean, I'm just going off of what, what, what I heard.
We might have a buyer.
Yep, comment?
Well, one building is a 50 by 100 and the other one is a 70 by 70.
Yeah, let me know.
And we did, and I know last time I voted wrong, we paid $20,000 for the two.
Richard, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I think you pretty well covered it. We've got some estimates, so with our January planning session.
Okay.
Decide what to do.
Do we need a motion for that or? Is everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
I thought we tabled it until after our planning commission.
We, we haven't. That's what we're.
So do we need to make a motion to table it?
Probably.
Okay, well, I make a motion to table it until after our planning session in January.
A second. Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Keith?
No.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, we, discussion with possible action to approve revised quote to put in sod around the aquatic center.
Didn't we do this all then?
We did.
Last month. But he had to go.
We owned a little more property out there than he realized.
Well, he had to go with the dirt work. He had to go a little bit further north than what he had anticipated to get it to drain. And so actually, the dirt work cost us $1,500 more than what we, than what he had quoted. So I thought, well, with the sod, because the sod is coming in $2,000 more than, so the whole thing is $3,000. So I thought I better bring it back to you guys.
So this is not actually $10,000 more it's total for all.
Totally, yes.
How quickly can he? My concern is that we get roots down before we freeze it out.
Yes.
A lot of times they suggest planting in the fall anyway and watering the heck out of it.
I think it'll take off.
They said as long as, especially if we water it throughout the winter.
I think it will be all right.
Water through the winter as well.
They don't have water to keep raining like it does.
Today I went out, or today I had them spray, pour the weeds. And so it'll be ready to spray the sod in 14 days. And so he'll start laying sod in 14 days if it's a root.
And then we'll have to get a lot of garden hose and sprinklers. I guess that's how we could empty the pool when closing. We could just pump the water over on the grass.
Before you put sod, are you going to put a sprinkler on? Put a sprinkler system on?
No.
No, that's going to be your job.
A water with gasoline?
Have we thought about artificial turf?
Can I come in on that?
Yes. I, I'll just, just a question.
I had something similar to artificial turf on the front porch and steps of the funeral.
Right.
It was a disaster. The dirt gets in it and when it rains, it makes mud. And you can wash on it for two hours and not get all the dirt washed out of it. And it.
Just having it at the pool alone, the care and the maintenance.
Yeah. I have a question about the turf. Because I noticed when, when the, when it started, that that artificial turf was flush with the concrete. And now I notice that it's about a half inch or more pushed down. Are they going to come back and boot that back up to where it's even with the concrete?
How do you boot that up?
I don't know. Can they, can they pull it, put more filler and then lay it back down? Or is it, is it just going to stay packed in like that?
I have a little machine, but the, the Whitebirds didn't like that little machine.
It's light on gravel, on gravel. Maybe has the gravel pushed down under it or? I haven't looked at it.
Hey, just a, just an observation I have had on the reference.
Trying to get the skittles.
What?
I'm going to move that we approved the revised quote. I'm sorry, Tip, I didn't see that. Revised quote to put in sod around the aquatic center. That'd cost them $10,350 from grayboard construction.
Second.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item G, discussion with possible action to review the July sales tax data. That's in your pocket and I think we all can kind of breathe a little bit of a sigh of relief because our sales tax is, is up. Item G, because we've already done it.
Christmas came a bit early for Annabell.
Yeah. Sales tax was, do you want to report on this, Tip, or? I was just reading off a here. Sales tax was $99,521.94 and the use tax was $26,872.
Well, Richard's been a little worried because of the way we budgeted and the way sales taxes been coming in. And so as Richard put it Monday, we're at a break even.
Yeah, that's, that's the best part of the sales tax data is we're at a break even point.
Yes.
Yeah, I was worried and then I didn't know how to interpret the budgets. That, uh, was part of my confusion. I was looking for a statutory statement and the town budget and the other budget of neither. I couldn't get it together.
So we, we got the numbers in this month, so it wasn't going to come out that way, so.
But, you know, it's, it's, it's a double Christmas. About a 20% increase in sales tax, so we're not going down. And it's at the break even point. That takes away, I mean.
Takes a little stress off, huh?
It took the stress off, yeah.
Well, we just hope it continues. Tiffany, I had a question from a merchant yesterday and correct me, correct me if I told him wrong and I'll go back and. He, he asked about online sales. And I told him that that's where the use tax comes from. So the, the brick and mortar stores right here in town that are having to charge and remit sales tax as opposed to people who are ordering online, that those products are taxed and returned to us in the form of use tax, correct? Semi-correct?
Semi-correct.
Little bit correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's confusing, very confusing, because I can look through the sales tax reports and I can see some that are not here on the sales tax report.
Some online?
No, some brick and mortar stores.
Oh, really?
Yes.
The harm. It's the point of delivery.
The point of delivery. Where they deliver the product.
Oh, so if they don't live here, you know, from the cities, then they're not trying to, you know, be like.
Well, like where you get the product.
If you went to Hennessy and purchased fencing for your house and had them deliver it here, it would have to be taxed and remitted to Hennessy.
Yes.
Because that's the point of delivery.
But only if I did that online.
Pardon me?
But only if I did that online?
No, no.
No, like you could go to Lowe's and order something at the Lowe's store and have them deliver it at your house. And Lowe's is going to pay subsidies because you didn't get the product at Lowe's. I mean, they didn't hand you the products at Lowe's. They gave you the products here. I wonder if that's really working.
Bert, the other thing we need to understand too, some of your bigger, like Amazon are doing that mandatory. They're still a lot online. They're not charging that until they get forced.
But that's why our use tax.
That's something the State Tax Commission really needs to look into because
They're leaving a lot of.
They're leaving a lot of money out there.
But I will tell you, that's why our use tax is up is because of Amazon.
Amazon, I don't know if that's the Amazon.
Yeah, Amazon.
And I, I think eBay's doing it now too, maybe?
I don't know.
I know Amazon.
I know Amazon.
Okay. Any other comments on the July sales tax? All right, item H is discussion with possible action to accept the resignation of Chad Hurst as reserve police officer.
Can I speak?
We say no?
Yeah.
We're not doing that?
I'm just saying, if we, if we deny it, does.
First, yeah, right. First and foremost, I didn't know him and his family was going to be here tonight because Ed was supposed to tell me. There is a presentation. I did get ahold of Ed.
We knew it wasn't tonight. Ed said he would get ahold of me. We came just for everything that was on the agenda.
I, I would not come like this if we're recognizing, so I apologize.
I thought it was tonight.
No, we just wanted to see the agenda. So first and foremost, I'd like to say something real dear to Chad. It's not just Chad. His wife and his kids have been very involved with the police department ever since. You know, Chad came over and went heaven was here. You know, I'm going to miss seeing his son run around the building and getting into everything. We drive dad and mom crazy and I just want, because I have grandkids, so I, I like that. It's been really hard the last month since Chad resigned because he's been such a go-to for us for.
Ideas.
For a long time, Chad's been a go-to guy for us and we're really suffering for it right now because our, our program's just, everybody's life is so busy and difficult. I totally respect what Chad's doing right now. He's got work going on in his family and personal life that he can handle right now. But if it's up to me, and I think that the board probably feels the same way, you're welcome to come back anytime and we will welcome you to the rooms.
If things change.
That's all right. I'll leave alone and stop having on the back.
Thank you.
And I echo that. We really do appreciate your service to the community, Chad. And I know you're involved in other things in the community as well that I hope are working out really well with your leadership. Trail.
Trail life.
Trail life. I, I never can quite remember the name, but I hope that's going well and commend you highly on doing that. I know how important scouting was to me as a child and it's, it's a good opportunity for, for kids.
I wouldn't want to let Allison not get patted on the back too because you know. No. No, trust me, I've done this for a long time and your support, you wouldn't have been able to do the things that you do without your support.
Absolutely.
We appreciate you guys. Yeah, buddy, I'm sorry I woke you up.
Sure.
He's giving me the evil eye.
Starts crying, you may get a mandate to you.
Anyway, we'll have you guys back next month. Like I said, I wouldn't have dressed, I just got back from Henneth, so I'm all chapped.
Like I said, we can't do anything else.
I guess we need a motion on that.
I'm making a motion sadly to accept the resignation of Chad Hurst. One second.
Will it die if we don't send it?
It dies.
I'll ask for a second three times.
Motion fails.
Cliff.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Wes.
Yeah.
Richard.
Yes.
I also respect that he came forward and said that he doesn't have the time to do it right now because we have a lot of them that just-
Just stop or slow down.
Gone for years.
Yeah.
So, I know being the reserve with the busy life, it's, it's difficult. It's a difficult thing to, to juggle cause you have a passion to do law enforcement, to make a difference.
You can't go because you're not making money yet.
No, but, but you have, you have that passion to, you have the servant's heart is what you have.
Absolutely.
And it, it, I'm sure it tore him to, to write that letter to make that decision, you know, cause that's probably a decision I should, should make and I just can't pull the trigger.
Well, just every time I've seen you, are you ready to come back? Ready to come back?
Keith, I've been meaning to pull that trigger for twenty years and I haven't pulled it, so I understand. Thank you, Chad.
And Allison?
It'd be nice if we could have a, for people that have served like Chad has, to have like an honorary.
We'll announce some stuff. Ed was supposed to be here, that's why I'm not calling you. I saw Chad, that fool walked in late.
I know, me, me too.
Okay, item I is appoint an emergency management director. At this time, we don't have one. Used to be called the civil defense director years ago. Announce the emergency management director. State statute requires that if you don't have one, that those duties fall on the mayor, so I would suggest we get one appointed ASAP.
Yes.
I think just keep it like we got.
Um, do you wanna address that, or?
Um, yes. I, um, I talked to Ed, our assistant chief, to see if he would be interested in being the emergency management director. I already got Hank on the nine-one-one board, so I thought, you know, let's just start divvying out all these different responsibilities to everybody. So I asked Ed if he would serve on, as our emergency management director and he said that he would.
I heard a podium on ours not here.
Okay. I'd write it, but I can't spell it.
That's what I was saying.
I have my letter.
C-A-N-G.
C-A-N-G-I-A-N-O.
What did you say, in what?
C-A-N-G-I-A-N-O.
Pick that mask off, I can't hear it. Say it, what's his name?
A-N-O.
A-N-O, sorry. Ken Gino.
I thought he was Italian, I didn't hear any English word.
I'm gonna move that the board appointed Ken Tiano.
Can.
Ken Tiano.
Just after a can.
Can.
G.
D.
On.
On.
O.
Ken Tiano.
There you go.
I knew that wasn't right, but that's how you spell, okay. Ed Ken Tiano as the town emergency management director.
Okay. Roll call.
Wes.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Same deal on that one.
Item J is discussion with possible action to accept the resignation of Tiffany Tillman, town clerk. Let me preface this by saying Tiffany created a stir all over the community. Cause I went to breakfast early this morning and was asked what was happening and who was gonna be taking care of them. There was some confusion, but to explain this to those of you that, that aren't familiar with how our, how our government's set up, the town clerk position is an elected position. It requires certain things by statute. The town clerk is to be at the meetings, to sign official town documents, to test the signatures, um, to keep a record of the minutes and, uh, take the minutes and then keep those in record and-
Ordinances.
Affix the town seal to the proper documents and ordinances.
Deliver them to the county clerk.
So Tiffany's other job that requires the majority of her time is town administrator. She is not leaving that position. And if she were, I probably would not be sitting here tonight because I would beat her out the door. But anyway, do you have anything you want to say before we make a motion, or?
Do I have anything to say? Well, I have been doing this since, uh, March two thousand six.
Fourteen years.
Yes.
Plus.
Fourteen and a half. So, um, I just thought that it was time to, um, to let somebody else. Now that I have some added responsibilities, it's, it's hard to keep everything and make sure that I keep the motions, keep the minutes, keep everything in line. That it would be publicly better that I let somebody else keep all that shit. Plus, I think other people need to start learning more about security.
Well, I-
Did we drive you crazy that I?
No, because you still get to.
We still get to, Richard. She's not leaving us.
If I was gonna do that, I would have, I would have quit the town administrator job and kept the clerk.
Yeah, yeah. Kept the easy job, huh?
Yeah.
But we appreciate your service as town clerk. I, I think you've done an excellent job for us and know you will continue to do as your duties as town administrator. Are you writing, Cliff?
I will make a motion to sadly accept Tiffany Tillman's town clerk's resignation.
Second. Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Wes.
Yeah.
Richard.
I hesitated cause I just had a bad thought. You can get up and walk away from that table if you're gonna finish this meeting.
You've already done it now.
After this meeting.
That doesn't fall on the mayor too, does it?
I wouldn't do that, see?
Okay, thank you. All right, item K is appoint town clerk. Tiffany has made a recommendation. Tiffany has made a recommendation of Katie Walters, who has been working here in the office for quite some time. You're looking-
Yeah.
You're looking for some, are you, have you got something to?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, no, actually, um, until, I want everyone to know that, um, until Shelley moved back into town this past month, really Katie was the unqualified person inside town hall to serve as the town's order. So, that's why I recommended Katie. Because up until it goes to election in January, February, Katie would be the unqualified. Cause you have to look at city elections.
Is she willing to?
Yes.
Yeah, she was told she was going to.
That was gonna be my question. Be back here next week going, okay.
No, 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 no.
She's worried about the state statute requirements.
You know, in order to be in the life of the fish, you have to live with and sing the women.
Okay.
And you have to resign. And to me, it, it works out good having them in, in, um, inside the office for signature.
Right. And she's already got this a couple of times.
Yes.
The difference, I couldn't hear, but she has to be trained.
Yes, she will have to go to training. Actually, she's already done this new official training. But I think what she, if, but she won't have to do this under an appointment. Now, if she was to run in the election come next year and she gets elected, then she will have to do the training. But just under an appointment, you don't have to.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Katie Walters as town clerk.
Second. Roll call.
Keith.
Yes.
Wes.
Yeah.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Okay, item L, executive session pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, section three oh seven B one. To discuss possible job promotion of David Trainer, Parks employee, Troy Watkins, street employee, discuss job status of Michael Jones and discuss job status of Christian Salis. An executive session.
I'm gonna move that, uh, we convene and adjutant discussion.
Second. Roll call.
Wes.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Okay.
You gonna bring us back in?
Okay.
I'm gonna move to, uh, we convene and adjutant discussion.
Second that, roll call.
Wes.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Okay, item N's discussion with possible action to promote David Trainer and Troy Watkins.
I make a motion to make Troy Watkins the superintendent of streets for his title and raise him to sixteen fifty. And promote David Trainer to fifteen dollars an hour. And his title, it will be park superintendent.
Second. Oh, do you second. Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Item N's discussion with possible action on the employment status of Michael Jones.
I make a motion to have Michael Jones full-time street department at his current pay.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes. Item O, discussion with possible action on the employment status of Christian Salis.
I make a motion for Christian Salis to be a full-time police officer.
Can you make that regular full time?
Regular full time.
I second that. Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Item P's accept or reject any resignations not received prior to the posting of the agenda. New business? No new business? Citizens comments, did you all think of anything you wanna say? All right, councilperson report.
I'd like Tiffany to talk about this one.
Well, I'm gonna have a report next month on total attendance, um, total revenue, total expenditures, that. But I was just going through, um, to see how we were doing budget-wise. And just during the month of, uh, July, our revenue was twenty-seven thousand dollars. So, uh, that kinda blew my mind because that was more than I budgeted for the whole year, so, um, yes.
It's almost a thousand dollars a day. It's, it's incredible and I love it. It's-
Are you in any of the heads figures yet?
No, I haven't even.
Okay, anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second, roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Okay, this will be a meeting of the Hess Utilities Authority Board of Trustees, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Roll call, please.
Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Yeah.
Wes.
You.
Keith.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Okay, consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of the meeting. Approval of claims as follows, July purchase orders, fifteen thousand, nine thirty-five, fifty-eight. August purchase orders, sixty-six thousand, four eighty-seven, eighty-seven. August meter deposit refunds, one hundred ninety dollars. Transfer seven hundred eighty-three dollars from pool cash, one four three six eight six to meter deposit C D three five zero two eight. And the treasures report. Any additions to the reports? Okay.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Keith.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments again?
Never mind.
Brian's outside, he won't come in.
Why isn't he coming in?
He's texting.
Maybe he thinks it's worse off.
You're getting?
Who?
Brian. Bert. Boney.
Yeah, cause we're meeting for this next agenda item.
You should know this. Yeah, he's been at that door before. Are you even in?
I told him just to come in.
Uh-oh. Somebody just stopped for you.
Okay. Other scheduled business, discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, or take action on the following. Item A's discussion with possible action to replace the pump at the lagoons. Tiffany put this in our, in our memo. The, one of the pumps is down to about, what, half capacity? And, uh, Farmers Electric took it out and, well, they have it, I think you all took it out. But, what was it, gonna cost like eighty-five hundred approximately to rebuild that? And-
Is that a pump going to your station? Yes.
That's just the parts and not the labor. Okay.
Just the parts, that does not exclude anything.
That would be using our existing motor with basically a brand-new pump, the way I understand it. Is that correct?
I thought the way Boney, that even if they rebuilt it, it wouldn't be full capacity.
It's only been around sixty percent capacity rebuilt.
Rebuilt.
That's not what Caleb told us.
Uh-uh.
I don't think so.
Caleb told us it would be, that it would be just like a brand-new one, except we would be using our motor. And a new pump was $21,000.
23.
23,000. I'm sorry. Yeah. It's a submergeable, it's what we pump the water over on Bill Jones' property with. It's one of two.
Because that's what I had a special with Brian and said that we can get it rebuilt, but it wasn't going to be, even after it was rebuilt, it wouldn't be 100%.
That's, that's not...
If they rebuilt it, it ought to be 100%. I don't know why it wouldn't be.
Well, that's what I thought too, but that's not what I was going to say.
No, I think it's 100%.
You trying to talk Caleb?
No, I was thinking it would be. I don't know why it wouldn't.
You must have pulled hard.
Do I mean to try?
Looks like we need to get a hammer after that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Don't just pause, you said?
Yes, that's just part.
Caleb, we're in town board meeting and discussing the item on the repair at the pump and we've got some confusion. Are you where you can speak to us about that? Can I put, can I? Can I put you on speaker? Okay. Okay, you with me, Caleb?
Yep.
Okay, uh, some of the, Bodie and some of the guys were thinking that if we rebuilt the lagoon pump, that it would only be at 60% capacity. And Tiffany and I thought from the conversation we'd had with you, it would be, the pump would be back to 100%.
Yes, if you, if you rebuild the pump, the old pump, if you rebuild it, what we had called to check on was basically the old bottom end pump, so it would be back to 100%. The only way it would be at 60% was like I discussed with you and then I talked to Tiffany, I believe, yesterday about, if you bought a whole new pump with a new motor and new pump ball and then we put the old pump back together, then you would have basically a backup for an emergency pump. And it's about 60% running is what it's at now because the impowers and the cuts are worn out real bad.
Okay, so, uh, parts on that I think were 8500 dollars.
Uh-huh.
Do you have any kind of a labor estimate at all?
If we, if we rebuilt it, it should come in as a whole unit and I would say, I mean, probably rough guessing, to put the new motor, the motor on the new pump and to reset it and everything, it'd probably be 800 to $1,000 on top of that.
Okay.
And if you went with the new pump, basically it would come in, um, we would just, you'd come in via freight company. We would take the thing up and, and set the new pump and hook it back up. The old pump, it'll take probably, it'll probably be about the same on the old pump, somewhere in there to put it back together. Because like I said, it's completely tore down in our shop right now and we haven't done anything with it since we had contacted you to find out what you guys wanted to do. So, you could put it back together if you wanted to.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused, I think. The pump that's torn down in your shop would be replaced with a, basically a new pump, correct?
Yes, but you got two choices. One is to go with a complete brand-new, a brand-new pump, which is a new motor and a new pump.
Correct.
That's a high, high cycle. If you go with the, the, just the new, the new pump or, I hate to say pump, the new bottom half, the actual pumping part of it is the one that was like $8,000 and some dollars. That would just be, we would reuse the, the motor that you already have and there's a centerpiece in there and it would reuse that part, but it would be a new pump on the bottom end.
Okay. Do you have any idea of what the condition of our existing motor is?
The existing motor has been, it was rewound, I want to say, a year ago. It's still got the sticker on it. Um, I know it was pulled, taken down Capital Electric in Oklahoma City. They went through and completely rewound the motor and redone it. I know Curtis or one of the guys that taken it down there, it's probably been a year, maybe two years ago. It's not that been, not the whole, I know we looked, there's a sticker on it and it did tell a date, but I'll be honest with you, I don't remember when it was. But it, the motor is still fair, fairly new and it's been rewound.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions of Caleb before we hang up? Okay, Caleb, thank you. We just needed some clarification.
If you have any other problems, if you need something else, just give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did he say a new pump is $8,000?
No, a new pump's 23,000.
No, I meant but.
The bottom half of this pump is 8500.
Plus another $1,000 to put it back together.
Right.
So, basically $10,000.
$10,000 versus 23,000.
So, that makes...
That makes it pretty easy to decide.
If, if we bought a new pump, one advantage we would have if we bought a new pump, we would have this old pump, which is operating at 60% capacity as a backup. How important that is, I don't know. There's two pumps down there and we've been doing without this one for what, two or three months?
Yeah, but it's running 12, 13 hours a day, one pump right now.
Right, yeah, I know we need to get it fixed. Yeah, I totally, I totally get that. I personally think we ought to just rebuild.
I do too.
What we've got.
Means we have two, we'll have two, you know what I mean? Wouldn't be like we'd be completely shut out if one went down.
So, I know the one that's in there now just got put back in there October, November last year. They took it to the city and had something to do.
You don't know if it was motor or pump?
I don't know. It was the pump on that one.
It was the pump?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that, so how would we, we replace the pumping, replace the pump and keep the motor of the, of the current?
Well, just maybe...
Repair, repair the current pump.
I'd say up to $10,000 or maybe we don't even need to put it, huh?
With Farmers Electric?
Do I need to price or just repair with Farmers?
It'd be nice to be with them.
Like up to?
Mm-hmm, or our auditor. Because on those big...
Do you think, do you think $1,000?
Coverage, should I do 12?
Well, 8500, he said 1,000 labor, 95.
Plus you got shipping and handling.
Well, you better put 12. That'll come in truck freight and I'll tell them what it'll cost because it's going to be heavy.
I move that we repair the current pump with Farmers Electric, not to exceed $12,000.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Keith.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Wes.
No.
Okay, item B, we have taken care of in our previous executive session. Item C, discussion with possible action to promote
Oh, nevermind.
Alyssa Cubett and Brian Birch and increase the salary of Brian Henderson.
I'm going to move to promote Alyssa Cubett as the water superintendent at a pay rate of $15 per hour. And move to promote Brian Birch as our wastewater superintendent. Also, I move to raise the pay of Brian Henderson to 13 per hour.
Second.
Roll call.
Wes.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Okay, item D is accept or reject any resignations not received prior to the posting of the agenda. New business? Or citizens' comments? Councilperson report.
Hallelujah, listen.
I move to adjourn.
I second. Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Wes.
You bet.
Yes.
Thank you all.